All rise. Hear ye, hear ye, Hamlin County Commissioned meeting in session. Honored the power of fifty present. Please remain standing.
I want to call this December the sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one, meeting of the Hamlin County Legislative Body to order. And I'm going to ask Commissioner Step to lead us in our prayer, please.
Before we pray, I'd like to remember, uh, Christian Limpka family, lost that young man. Remember her, Trista Laws also, while she's going through also with this accident. Pray much for both these families. Let us pray. Our most precious Lord and Father in heaven, we come to you, Lord, at a special time of the year. We celebrate the birth of Jesus Christ, dying on the cross for our sins, Lord. We pray that you'll be with each and every one of us in our decisions tonight, Lord, that we do in Christ like men, or, Lord, in your way you want us to have to do it, Lord. Leading God us, we thank you for blessings, and we pray for the sick, Lord, but most of all tonight we pray for the lost. For it is in Jesus' name that we pray, and it is only in that we know, and amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Step. At this time, I'm going to ask Commissioner Hodge to lead us in our pledge, please.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Commissioner, some of you may have trouble turning your mics on because some of these mics were used in the courtroom today, and they've been on all day, so if you need to borrow your neighbor's mic, do so, okay? Let's do the roll call at this time, please. We do have a form present, so we are open for business. Commissioner Neesmith, you wanted the privilege at this time?
Yeah.
Okay.
What I want to bring to everybody in the audience and all the commissioners is save the pool at Panther Creek. State of Tennessee is wanting to go away the pool, wanting to come up and give each of four different parks four hundred thousand dollars. If we get rid of this pool, when a person takes his kids down there to camp, they can't swim unless they swim in Cherokee Lake, which is noted to have overflows up to eighty-three, I think it was, in the two thousands. But I talked to Rick Elliott, he said, "I think it's a done deal." I talked to Spee Sutherland just for a moment, he said, "Well, he's been in a meeting all day, and for two hours," and he said, "They're looking about fixing a splice country down there, and maybe go down and fix a beach on the side of the lake." Well, if I want to take my granddaughter swimming, I'm not going to take her to Cherokee Lake. If I did, it would be on the upper end of Cherokee Lake, not on the middle or lower end. A lot of state parks have got beaches. Teleport Plains has got a beach, but, uh, everybody swims. They got areas, it's a lake, but it's all fixed up for small kids, it's up for big kids. You can have paddle boats on it, you can have, uh, regular boats on it, but they've got to be battery powered, okay? And other places have got that. Big Red State Park, they've got one of the best parks that there was. You can take a teenager down there and just turn him loose, and he'll have the time of his life on it. But I think if we get rid of this pool, I think the campers are going to quit coming. A lot of them will. A lot of them's got teenagers, a lot of them's got eight, nine-year-olds. They don't want to walk in hiking trails, they want to go swimming. I think we need to show enough publicity that if it was ever a time we put skin in the game, I think this is it. The state's going to put up some money, and I think it's time that our county put up some money in order to save these pools. That's the only way I see it, that it's going to be done. And I think we need to get a committee of commissioners and citizens, just try to get citizens that camp down there. Kind of hand-pickled, if we can, to go over this. But I am so surprised that the tourism hadn't jumped in on this thing with big feet. There's a chart that you look at on Tennessee State Parks, it's got a place, boats, yes or no. Swim pools, yes, 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 yes. Will be one with a no one if we get rid of this pool. And I don't know who came up with what it's going to cost to fix this pool. I remember back in the day when I was in school, it's been sixty years ago, sixty-five, maybe seventy, but we got out of school on Memorial Day weekend, and we walked to Petey's Pub. And you had to live in here, you probably did too, you go to Petey's. And that Petey stayed open from Memorial Day to Labor Day. This place, this thing down here doesn't stay open that much. And I've heard school talk about when school closes, they'll close it down down there. I know at Seven Oaks, I don't think Seven Oaks closes their pool when school starts. It's not regular. I think we really need to consider putting some money into this thing to keep that swim pool down there, to keep this park. It's the only public park that we have in Hamlin County that's got a pool as of this time. We get rid of it, we don't have one. Other public places to swim, there used to be the VFW, used to be the Moose. Sullivan asked me, he said, "Well, Rick Elliott said, well, why don't they can go to this, uh, the new civic center pool? If I'm camping out down on Panther Creek, I'm not going to load up my car and go to any swim pool in Marston, Tennessee, or anywhere else." I think we need to, and we've got the money right now to do this. Our sales taxes, I talked to Scotty, about eighteen to twenty percent right now. We've got money to do everything in the book. I think we need to spend whatever it's going to take to do this, but I think we need to get in on it. Do we have to have a new pool? Or we can put a new liner in it? Find out some of the particulars. Just don't let Niceville sit there and tell us what we're going to do. This is our county. We know, I think we need to protect it. That's all I've got to say.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Neesmith. And we'll get a committee together, and they can meet during the committee meetings in January, and we'll see what we can do.
By the way, they've got a public meeting coming up the twentieth down at Panther Creek Park. I think everybody needs to go, take the neighbors, and it'd be for, you can bring out what you're doing. I know social media is already jumping all over. Some of these guys, Joe Moore, some of those other guys, they're jumping all over this thing.
What time's the meeting? What time?
I don't know what time it is. It was in the newspaper, I'll have to find out if it does. I can go to Facebook, I'm going to put something on Facebook about it anyway.
Five to six.
Say what?
Five to six.
Five to six. Well, we can keep them married to the benediction at ten-thirty if we have to. I don't think they're going to run off left, people standing there.
Who seconded?
I did.
Bobby Hahn seconded the motion. Thank you, Commissioner Neesmith. Any discussion? At this time, Chairman Step, you're recognized. We're back on screen now. Bobby Hahn.
Thank you, Chairman.
No.
Okay.
Item three A, approval of the consent calendar items, I put that in the form of a motion.
Let's start the motion. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Thirteen, eight, zero, nine.
Second.
We're on the wrong screen. Okay, the motion is approved. We're trying to get switched over to the right screen.
Item three B, approval of regular calendar items.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to amend that calendar, please.
Let's get a motion first on the regular calendar, and a second on...
Put that forward motion, Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. We're going to just take it off the board. We've got requests to amend the regular calendar. Commissioner Doty, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to add, Ms. Crystal Jessie of the Jessie Law Firm, she wants to talk to us about the opioid lawsuit that her firm has going on. She's here tonight, I'd like to add her to the Finance Committee as item D.
Okay, we have a second. We have a second to the amendment to the regular calendar. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, we had voted this one off board. All those in favor of adding Crystal Jessie to the Finance Committee under item C, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Does it oppose? No. Okay, I assume since there was no votes, it's all aye votes, so the amendment is approved, and we're back to the original motion with the amendment. Any discussion on the original motion with the amendment? Hearing that, then let's vote the motion, please.
Thirteen, eight, zero, nine.
The motion is approved with the amendment, and the amendment is added to the Finance Committee.
It's on ahead, Chairman.
Okay, the chair at this time will entertain a motion that we approve the consent calendar.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Doty. This is on board. And we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing that, let's vote the motion, please.
Thirteen, eight, zero, nine.
The motion is approved. At this time, we will entertain public comments concerning items that are on the agenda only. So if you're here tonight and you'd like to address the commission regarding any item on the agenda, you've got three minutes to do so. Please come to the podium.
Name is Linda Nowey, twenty-three, forty-three, Joe Stevens Road. I'd like to talk about several items on your agenda, and the first thing I'd like to mention is your addition to your Finance Committee. I remember when Mr. Neesmith wanted to add a presentation to save thirty million dollars. No, we couldn't do that, and I have no objection to adding Ms. Jessie, that's fine, but it's interesting how sometimes it's okay, but when it's saving thirty million dollars, it's not. Second item is the Economic Impact Plan. I know how this would go. It's all planned, it's all a done deal, as they say, but I would suggest that the county not join in this. It's city property. City property taxes can be used for the incremental payments to the developers, and it will be, the sales tax will go to the city because of the location in the city. Of course, half will go to the schools. That will happen anyway. It doesn't matter whether you give up property tax from the county, that sales tax will go. The other item is campground regulations and improvements at Cherokee Park. We're trying to encourage tourism and so forth at Cherokee Park. I think Mr. Neesmith brought up an excellent point about preserving the pool at Panther Park. Some of you are a little bit young, a few of you may remember when they were going to, the state was going to come in and make a golf course, a nine-hole golf course out of most of Panther Park. The people rose up, and the people stopped that done deal. This can be stopped also. You would love to send messages to your state legislators, this would be the time to pass a resolution, at the end of this meeting or in January, and send your own emails to them and tell them you want Cherokee, or no, excuse me, Panther Pool kept open. The last item is the Hale House. You received one bid. Of course, I haven't seen what the changes are. Evidently, it's going from new windows to glazing. The problem is, you should have done that as an alternate with the original bidding. Now, you have one person who knows, hey, I've got the job, I can pick how much I want to credit if that is what is done. You have problems with your procurement. This should have been like the jail was, alternates. New windows, bid it that way, glazing as an alternate, not come back and try to renegotiate and redesign the bid. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else who wishes to address the commission?
Edna Green, forty-nine, eighty-one, Cameron Road. I'd like to address what they were talking about Panther Creek State Park. First, thank you, Mr. Neesmith, for being willing to bring this up. It's not just the campground, people that enjoy that, the people that live in that neighborhood, their children go to that pool as well. Mind it all the way through, as will my grandchildren. If they open it back up, it is a necessity for all of them, not just the campers, and you just need to keep in mind that Hamlin County citizens pay taxes, so it needs to be considered. If we can spend money on all this other stuff, why not take care of something that would benefit the children and the tourism? Kill two birds with one stone for a change, instead of netpicking.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else who wishes to address the commission?
Wayne Holden, eighty-one, fifty, West Point Drive. Uh, we're going to fix up the campground down at Cherokee Park. That's a good thing. It probably needs it. But we have a code enforcer in this town that we pay good money to. I don't see anything that he's doing. And who's going to enforce the law when, to make people clean up their act and do what they're supposed to do? We don't have it yet, so what makes you think we're going to get it? Hmm? I'll sit and watch. I've been watching for a long time. I wanted my community cleaned up, but nothing got done about it. So, you know, the city, there's things in the city that need to be cleaned up. This town is a toxic dump. Out at Inca is even worse. Out on, in Suffer Springs Road, in Road Junction, where I lived all my life, all I ever seen was dumps and junk cars and toxic waste. But thank God, God got me out. But I didn't sell it. I wouldn't give them the satisfaction. And I'm a taxpayer, and I worked all my life. So if you're going to fix up Cherokee Park and clean it up and make it look good, make sure you can enforce the laws.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else who wishes to address the commission?
Wayne Holden, eighty-one, fifty, West Point Drive. Uh, we're going to fix up the campground down at Cherokee Park. That's a good thing. It probably needs it. But we have a code enforcer in this town that we pay good money to. I don't see anything that he's doing. And who's going to enforce the law when, to make people clean up their act and do what they're supposed to do? We don't have it yet, so what makes you think we're going to get it? Hmm? I'll sit and watch. I've been watching for a long time. I wanted my community cleaned up, but nothing got done about it. So, you know, the city, there's things in the city that need to be cleaned up. This town is a toxic dump. Out at Inca is even worse. Out on, in Suffer Springs Road, in Road Junction, where I lived all my life, all I ever seen was dumps and junk cars and toxic waste. But thank God, God got me out. But I didn't sell it. I wouldn't give them the satisfaction. And I'm a taxpayer, and I worked all my life. So if you're going to fix up Cherokee Park and clean it up and make it look good, make sure you can enforce the laws.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else who wishes to address the commission? Seeing no one else then, we'll go to the agenda. Chairman, the board at the Finance Committee, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item six A, the approval of the monthly checks, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, let's vote the motion, please.
Thirteen, eight, zero, nine.
The motion is approved.
Item six B, Resolution twenty-one, twenty-five, a resolution of the Hamlin County Commission for Tennessee approving a economic impact plan for Bellwood Farms Economic Development area, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Hahn.
What kind of money are we talking about either? Is anybody...
It will not cost the county any taxation dollars that they're currently getting, and then the incremental growth will be added on to that, and then after that, we will reap the rewards of the entire property tax, business tax, and the, um, new sales tax that applies to the county.
Okay. What proceeds will apply to this? I mean, the property's in the city, right?
The property is in the city.
So there's no property tax?
No, we get a portion.
A portion?
Yeah, it's twelve and nine, I believe. Is that correct? Twelve for the, yeah, the state.
So today, you're collecting twelve thousand three hundred thirty-four dollars, and you will keep that money. The projection is, on top of that, you will commit seventy-five percent of the new incremental revenue to pay for public infrastructure. That does not go to the developer, contrary to what you may see on Facebook. That is to pay for traffic situations, road liabilities, things like that. Your net increase at development for the first ten years will be fifty-seven thousand two sixty-two, which does not include your twelve-year continuing. So total would be sixty-nine five six, sixty-nine five nine six. New money, or new money would be fifty-seven two sixty-two to the county. Year ten, after that expires, we have two seventy-eight grand of new money. So we're talking about paying for pools, paying for things like that. This is new revenue to the county.
And that's property tax.
It is property. Um, the sales tax is a little over nine hundred thousand. Um, to say all that would be new would be incorrect. It could be money you'd take to turn it out and make it somewhere else. Um, I think the good thing is, speaking of the developer, most of things are all the things committed out there so far are new to be new. So what we look at is, we need to be original, or offer people from property here to come there to shop and leave their money in the house. Um, and that's the beautiful thing, you know, I hear a lot of negative, like, God, we don't have any, we don't like here. You know, you can go to Mexico, we overpay it a lot more than a hundred hundred times. But our county is a great place. I think saving the pool is a good thing. I think on the tourism side, talking about that, we've already discussed that, we kind of have a plan of action among our legislature. We don't know, we have been told as well, like Mr. Neesmith said, that it is a done deal and they're going to fix it, but I think if the commuter gets to come in on us to traffic, that's more people, we can entertain and get it that far, and that's usually a good thing. That should, that gives you a little bit of idea of what's coming today, which you will never know. That's all your face facts, that's stated, and then your increase will be about fifty-seven two sixty-six, um, that'd be your, you know, what's probably going to be.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Anyone else?
I've got a question. Why, why do we call this, uh, the Bellwood Economic Development, instead of the people that own the farm, the Roberts family? I mean, I'm sure there's a reason.
Well, we asked them, and they preferred us, maybe if we could come up with another name other than that. So, the property is right there off of Bellwood, that's been in their family for many years. Uh, those girls grew up there on Bellwood Road, so they were comfortable with it. We got their...
Okay. I just wondered, I just, my heart wouldn't Roberts.
Anybody else? Hearing no other discussion then, let's vote the motion, please.
Thirteen, eight, zero, nine.
The motion is approved.
Item six C one, Fund One-O-One for Sheriff's Office of seven thousand eighty-nine dollars. This is for a salary supplement for the narcotics officers, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, then let's vote the motion, please.
Thirteen, eight, zero, nine.
The motion is approved.
Item six C two, Fund One-O-One for Planning Department, nine hundred ninety dollars for final payment of a retired employee, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing that, then let's vote the motion, please.
Thirteen, eight, zero, nine.
The motion is approved.
Item six C three, for reappraisal of six hundred and thirty-five dollars. That's for a salary of a thirty-hour-a-week employee, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing that, then let's vote the motion, please.
Thirteen, eight, zero, nine.
The motion is approved.
Item six C four, Fund One-O-One for Drug Court, three thousand five hundred dollars, and that's for medical insurance, and I put it in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion?
What about the dog court?
Hearing that, let's vote the motion, please. Mr. Ward is having problems, he needs to sign in.
You're blocking the pathway. You're blocking the path. Oh, I'm sorry, he's knocked me out of the way there. I'm going to take this big bottle of water. I still think we need to have something for dog court. You haven't seen it? You haven't seen it? You had Janice swirling about. I'm going to call tomorrow and tell that sneezing.
Thirteen, eight, zero, nine.
The motion is approved.
Thank you.
Item six C five, Hamlin County Board of Education, Budget Amendment Three, increase of thirty-nine thousand twenty-five, and that has no maintenance of efforts, so I'll put it in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing that, let's vote the motion, please.
Thirteen, eight, zero, nine.
The motion is approved.
Item six D, this is the opioid lawsuit, Crystal Jessie.
Thank you for having me here tonight. We've gotten a couple of calls in the last week after we filed the new lawsuit against McKenzie that was not in the first round of lawsuits about Hamlin County possibly pausing into that lawsuit. What you have to recall is that Hamlin County currently is not in the lawsuit in regard to the manufacturers and the retailers. What has happened within the last month is, and since, what we've been working on since June, is that there was announcement that McKenzie was going to reach a five-hundred-and-seventy-three million dollar agreement with forty-seven attorney generals, territories, five Indian territories, and a district of Columbia. That money will not naturally come to the counties. There's no agreement or no legislation that says it will come directly to the counties or any split of it at all. So what we did on behalf of our clients is, after the judge opened up a new multi-district litigation section for McKenzie in California, the judge instructed us to go back for all of our clients and to refile lawsuits in our home state in regard to McKenzie, and we would fall into the multi-district litigation to offer up a proposed settlement for a class against McKenzie. So that is the first set of litigation that we've got going on that just started last week. We've been approached by several individuals about whether Hamlin County can opt into this or not. At first, we said yes, definitely, but we're getting some specific guidance from the judge in the multi-district litigation. What he has told us to do, because this has occurred in around three states so far, is that if a county wants to pursue opting in, they have to first vote that they want to opt in and file a litigation, and then we have to see if we can get you into it. Since you were not naturally in litigation to start with, I cannot guarantee with a hundred percent that I can get you into it now. We're still trying to work out those issues sitting here today. The other thing that has came down recently, if you've been following in the news, we had our first jury trial in Ohio, and a jury found CVS Walgreens... the news, we had our first jury trial in Ohio, and a jury found CVS, Walgreens, and Walmart guilty at that point in time of recklessly distributing massive amounts of opioids. What that means to us is this. You all have seen the settlements, as our county has, in regard to the three big distributors and Johnson &amp; Johnson. What we have not gotten is the retailers and manufacturers to come to the table, so this, we had two lawsuits going at the same time. We had one in Ohio, one in West Virginia. The jury came back in Ohio and said affirmatively that the retailers are guilty. So we go back in February for a damages trial. What we think that's gonna do now is opening up them to come to the table to now want to settle. You all are not in any litigation that I know of in regard to those three specific entities. So that is another issue to bring up that someone has addressed with me, is whether we can get you into that. If we can get you into the MDL if it comes to fruition, since you are not in an original complaint, that's free money to the county. So it seems like that's something you need to discuss with your county mayor and your attorney. The last thing, of course, is in regard to the manufacturers. We had the separate trial in West Virginia. It was a judge trial. We did that strategically for several reasons. We anticipate getting that verdict back, coming down probably in January. You all are, as of, all I know today, unless Mr. Capps can tell me different, I don't believe you all are in any other litigation in regard to the manufacturers. So what I'm saying is, if you all decide to go forward, we have options to opt you into these lawsuits, we think. We will know more in the next thirty days, so this commission meeting may be a little bit getting the cart before the buggy. But I wanted to come here because I was asked about it. But you do need to probably go into a closed session, speak with your county attorney, speak with your county mayor. If you have questions, I don't care to come meet with you at that point in time to see if we can opt you in to these proposed MDLs going forward. Does anyone have any questions in that regard?
Is McKenzie the marketing arm of the opioids for Cycler family?
They were. In 2007, Purdue Pharma pled guilty at that point in time for reckless marketing, and part of that guilty plea was that they would not market the way they used to. So McKenzie came into fruition at that point in time and started marketing for the Cyclers and Purdue Pharma, along with Jansing, which is Johnson &amp; Johnson's parent company. So they were the way for them to get around the criminal litigation. And we specifically, if you read the complaints that we filed last week across the state, there's an email from one Cycler brother to another stating, when are they gonna catch what we're doing? So they knew what they were doing in regard to McKenzie. So, you know, some, one of the news articles that did an interview last week asked me, do I not think this is too far-fetched? I said, no, Purdue Pharma went after them to avoid criminal litigation. They've already settled with the state's Attorney Generals of forty-seven states. We think if we push it, we can bring monies back to our counties. And if you remember the last time, Tennessee has a very, in doing class actions, which is a very specific niche, Tennessee has an interesting constitution, which does not allow the state's Attorney General to settle all claims, and so it's been our position from the beginning, and that's why the litigation ensued. And we entered a joint agreement to split the last one fifty-fifty, so we do believe the counties have a separate cause of action. So you do probably want to meet and make sure that you're not in any litigation, and just let me know if you have any other questions or anything.
Any other questions?
Thank you all. Merry Christmas.
You're recommending that we discuss this further with?
I am. I'm recommending if I, if I can get you into them, we need to opt Hamlin County into them and file the separate lawsuits.
Okay. I think, I can't speak for all the commissioners, but I believe there's a definite interest.
Yes.
You know, so.
I'd like to make a motion that we pursue this with the Jesse firm.
Okay.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
And was that proper? That should have been you, I think.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion?
With the understanding that I can, if I can get you in.
Yeah, we understand.
Because I don't want to guarantee that I can do this, sitting here tonight, but if I can get you.
Yeah, we understand.
Additionally, we have to do our research as well to make certain that we can move forward. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Yes. But, but with all, all matters concerned, if everybody's on the same page here, it only benefits our county.
Absolutely. Brings more money back to Hamlin County if we can get you in.
Any other discussion? We're gonna vote this off the board. All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, let it be known by saying no. The motion is approved. Thank you. At this time, the chair will recognize Chairman Tim Goh of the Public Service Committee.
Thank you, Chairman. 7A, Hamlin County Sheriff Department, Surplus Item, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
The motion is approved.
7B, Resolution 21-26, request to apply for Urban Transportation Planning Grant for SR-160 corridor study, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Oh. Commissioner Neesmith, you're recognized.
What is, what are they gonna do on this study? What, you don't, anybody know yet, or?
Go ahead and address that.
Move the cones or?
Probably.
The studies, the study would be, right now, the scope of the study would be all the 160 corridor from West AJ Highway to, to the interstate. And what the study would do would identify the intersections that have problems, and then propose solutions for those problems. And we've had, today at the office, we had a couple of petitions that were submitted by residents out in the Union Heights area, asking that T-Dot do something about specifically the intersection with 25A, and also Martin Luther King and Sulfur Springs. Those are the three on the eastern end of it, in the midsection, that have issues.
I know coming off of 25, like you want to come off of 25 after blow my house, and you want to go to the right, go towards, get on 160, go towards Marsh Town, you can do that. But if you're sitting there wanting to go left towards Union Heights, you sit there, because you got Walters, in the morning, you got Walter State students coming up our, and they just pull right over. They make that automatic yield.
It'll address that situation.
It's a bad situation there. Martin Luther Boulevard is the big problem though.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
The motion is approved.
Thank you, Chairman. 7C1, 7C, Redistricting Map of Resolution Approval, Resolution 21-27, Resolution to Adopt Reapportionment Redistricting Plan for the Hamlin County School Board, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Commissioner Neesmith.
Any changes in the school board? This redistricting gonna change them, or?
Neither of them right now.
Let Mr. Gardner.
Gardner can tell us.
No, it's not. It's not gonna change anything with the school board. Nothing's gonna change on any of the redicting. It's just, it moves the lines from our redistricting plan for the county commission to the school board constable's and group commission. So it just follows all the lines already set forth, which, like, constable, school board, their district is one, T-Cat's commission district's one, and so.
So all of them won't be, the road won't be changed, nothing, but nothing gonna be changed.
No, it just follows the commission line that's already set.
Anybody else? Let's vote the motion, please.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
The motion is approved.
7, 7C2, Resolution 21-28, Resolution to Adopt Reapportionment Redistricting Plan for the Hamlin County Road Commission, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
The motion is approved.
7C3, Resolution 21-29, Resolution to Adopt a Reapportionment Redistricting Plan for Hamlin County Constables, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
The motion is approved.
Chairman, that's all I have.
Thank you, Chairman Goh. At this time, the chair will recognize Chairman Chris Cutshaw of the Building and Grounds Committee.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chairman. Item 8A, Campground Regulations for Cherokee Park, and I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
The motion is approved.
Item 8B, Campground Rental Rates and Pavilion Rental Rates, the changes, I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Commissioner Neesmith, you're recognized.
Frank, well, this, the increase in these prices, is it gonna, you think it's gonna affect you any getting campers in there?
Uh, just for the people that's long-term.
Long-term?
Yeah, they won't, they won't do anything, those people just all.
Another question for you. Those campgrounds across the, across the River Bridge, that new one going in, and there gonna be another one going down there, and there's one on the right-hand side, do they have long-term camping?
They're all long-term.
They're all long-term. What are their rates?
Depending on what you're on, place in front or back end, their, their rates are on a yearly basis. You're talking about the long-term drinking account, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. There, there's some of them, part of competitors with hours, and some of them are long hours.
You don't think that'd affect campers coming to our place?
I don't think so, no.
Any other discussion? None, let's vote the motion, please. Commissioner Goh.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
The motion is approved.
That's all I have, Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Cutshaw. At this time, we'll recognize Chairman Tim Horner of the Justice Center and GL Project Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 9A, the Special Inspections and Material Testing Service Agreement, this was with GL Services for $60,000, and I'll put that in the form of a motion.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Twelve yeas, one nay.
Okay, the motion is approved.
Item 9B, the Bid Tabulation for the Hell House Renovations, Mayor Britton.
The, it was presented at committees, the, we had one bid, and that was McSpadden Incorporated out of Dandridge, and the bid was 551,000. The base bid was 551,000, which was about double from what we had received previously. The architect, Dave Wright, and myself have had conversations with McSpadden as far as trying to get the, the cost more reasonable. The best offer that we've gotten from them is, is this, is, in the 551, there was an $8,000 contingency, so that would be taken out. Instead of replacing the windows, we would, we would repair them with putty and paint, reduce, we would pay the utilities while they're working. We would, we would not, in, in the specs, we would replace, on the backside of the house, there's a little railing in the back on, on a, on a roofing piece, and that would not be replaced. And also, the exterior trim soffit and fascia was removed from the project, and the alternate for painting the second floor was not included. So basically, the objective was to, to get the house where we can use it. And as far as ADA requirements, so you would have the ADA ramp, you would have the ADA bathroom, you would rewire the house, you would, and have new lighting downstairs, you would have, let's see, you would repaint downstairs. And the house totally is about 4,000 square feet, and the first floor is right around, I think, twenty, 22 to 2,500 square feet. And that's, that would be the target, that we would be able to use that, that space. The pri, the lowest price I could get them to was $355,000, which is about 200,000 less than what the base bid was. So, so it would, to get, using McSpadden, to get the, the roof repainted, the bathroom, the ADA ramp, the whole house rewired, and more painting on the main floor, it'd be 355. Now, we've got our audited fund balance this week, as county audit is wrapping up our, our audit. And last fiscal year, the fiscal year that finished June 30 of '21, we grew fund balance by 2.7 million dollars. So our unassigned fund balance, which unassigned means that it's not reserved for any reason, it's, it's not committed for any reason, its money available is 8.7 million dollars, which is up from 5.9 million the year before. So money is available if, if you choose to, to, to do this project on the Hell House.
Commissioner Cutshaw, you're recognized.
Mayor, a couple of things, as we go through these changes here, all this being discussed, we're in pretty good shape with this, what you're talking about, the price, the price that, that you got?
It's, I know we've been criticized for, for the procurement system, and, and, you know, we bid this thing for three times, and, and we've done everything we know to do to try to get construction companies to, to participate in, in the bid process. And the, the work is, is detailed work. You know, there's, the only framing is the walls and the new bathroom, and, and electrical work, is you gotta go into the walls and, and do that work, and, and that's the most expensive part of it, is rewiring the house.
There, there's a couple of things I think at play here. Number one, it's a historic home. You know, we got away the cost that we put into it, but I don't think anyone wants to see it go away. All right, secondly, did, did I remember that you had some thoughts about somebody coming in and renting space?
One thing we've, we've talked about is, is talking to TCAT, and they have a, a Building Technology Program. And I talked to them last week about, you know, if we did, about them doing some of the work. And basically, and we sent them the specs, we sent them the drawings, and basically where we are on that is, they said that they would look at it, if the project, or parts of the project, they couldn't do the whole thing, but if parts of the project match their curriculum for the Building Technology Program, then there's a possibility they could do some of the work. We supply the materials, and they do some. But we don't know at this moment, right now, whether that would be part of it. And it would take some time, like, for example, in the library, a few years ago, the library downstairs, where the children's library is, they needed a new HVAC system, and the library contacted TCAT, and they did, they put in the new system, but it took longer. And because the, the students don't have the expertise. And because the, the students don't have the expertise, one, two is that this project would take more than one trimester to complete. So you'd have different students, you know, doing it.
Didn't, didn't we also have some idea of leasing out some of this space?
Well, that's, that's, that's a possibility. But right now, I guess that's more of a possibility if we could finish both floors and, and, and get some revenue off of it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Goh, you're recognized.
Mayor, I, I know this is a lot of money for us to put, be putting back in that house and stuff like that. Uh, what I would think we should do is probably put that on the back burner for now. We don't, we're not, excuse me, we're not in a hurry to rent that out or, or to get that done, correct?
Correct.
So why don't we kind of push our brakes on that for a little bit, table it until we can figure out what better avenue to take? Wait, wait for TCAT to come over here, or the school to come over here and see what they can do and stuff like that, then bid it back out without those areas, and see what we can come up with.
I'm not, I'm not opposed to that at all. And one thing that, that we might consider doing in the meantime is go ahead and paint the roof.
Sure.
Because that, that makes it an eyesore. Its condition right now makes it an eyesore.
Okay. I'll put that in a motion that we get the roof painted, and we hold off on the rest of it, put the table on the rest of it.
I, I would add something, too, that it's been discussed, the DA's office, the state pays $3,500 a month for...
But, but we can't get it done. We can't put them in there until the whole thing's completed.
I'm, I know, but I'm saying it would pay in the long run, it would pay for itself, getting $3,500 a month rent out of it.
We, we have a motion on the floor from Mr. Goh.
I'll second that motion.
And, uh, is there anyone who wants to second the motion, Mr. Doughty?
Yes, sir.
There's a motion, second that we put this thing on hold, how long?
Well, beginning of the new year, we, we're going to take another look at it, see, and we get the bids of, or get whatever from the school over here, see what they can do. They might be able to do a whole lot more than we decide. I don't want to pay someone else to do it, you know, and they'd be able to fix and report back after we hear from TCAT.
Something else, Mayor, that's why I should speak, is if we can get TCAT and also ask them to look at the electric, the HVAC, if we're not under a time crunch, it would not only benefit us, but it would benefit those students having actual physical hands-on experience. And the electrical group, I've just been dealing with quite a bit through my job, and they are very capable of doing the scope of work.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing that, discussion? All of those, uh, see?
I've, I've got a question.
I guess we could...
Bill, what will happen to the contractor if we do this? Just let him say his own hold? You just tell him he's on hold?
I mean, we're basi, maybe this should be, in, in the motion is that we reject the bid. We need to reject the bid.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if we could amend the motion to reject the bid, but go ahead and, and we, we can bid the painting of the roof and get it done early spring.
Okay.
Can you rebid everything?
Maybe we subcontract.
Can you rebid the electric? Can you rebid?
Oh, yeah.
You need to rebid the whole thing, you know? Different section, okay.
Right now, we're putting, the motion is to put it on hold, and then we'll deal with all of this other stuff later on. Uh, and we're going to vote this off the board. All of those in favor of putting it on hold, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, just, just for semantics, is if we could get a motion to reject the bid from, from McSpadden?
Motion to reject the bid.
Okay. We have a motion from Mr. Doughty, and a second from Mr. Goh.
So, so if we make a motion to go forward, and then we vote no, then we would reject?
We can run a motion. Will we have to?
Vote no.
We'll vote no if they didn't accept the...
Okay, we're going to vote this one on the voting system. Is that correct? Okay.
If they vote yes, they're voting to accept the bid. No is to reject it.
That's right. Yes would be accept the bid, no is to reject the, the bid. So, uh, any questions or discussion? You understand how we're voting? Yes accepts the bid, no rejects it. Just vote the motion.
I need a, I need a minute.
I might say...
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Doughty, and Mr. Goh, second. Now, before we tally the votes, does anybody want to change their vote? Okay, let's tally the votes.
Thirteen yeas, eleven nays.
Okay, uh, the motion to reject the bid is approved.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, uh, Chairman Horner. At this time, we will entertain comments from the public on non-agenda items on, non-agenda items on. Please come to the voting, state your names. We've got three minutes.
My name's Ann Warner. I live at 1535 Panther Creek Road. And in the spirit of Christmas, we would just like to share a little something with everyone. Merry Christmas.
Thank you very much.
Hope you all enjoy and use your pocket constitutions.
Thank you. Anybody else who wishes to address the commission?
Lindanoe 2343, Joe Stevens Road. I do hope you enjoy those constitutions, and you can keep the little red bag.
Give this to Joe.
I appreciate what you did on the Hale House. You did the right thing. That whole project, a house that cost 585, whatever it was, three bids.
Items on the agenda, this is not...
It's fine, I'm talking about the, what you finished doing.
Okay.
You need to look long and hard and be careful as you proceed. And I, of course, I know Mr. Shipley was all concerned about the little white house. It's still there. The other item is, I was over at the Justice Center, they're moving dirt like crazy, and it's kind of sad when you drive by and you think $30 million wasted. What could that have done? What could it still do? Schools, roads, everything else in this county. Or maybe just novel idea, maybe just reduce taxes. I believe I saw that on someone's Facebook page. It was a good idea.
Anyone else?
My name is Tony Strazulo. So, I want to talk about the Rules Board. We haven't had the Rules Board since March of this year. And it doesn't need to be on the back burner. I understand that you all are waiting it was voted in for litigation and hearing, you know, this, then the other, but why do we put a stop to everything? Nothing's even been mentioned about, hey, these are what steps we've been taking, we, we've hired this person to look into it, nothing. It's just been silence. So, you know, I would like somebody to address where we stand with the Rules Committee and where we stand with the rules in general. I'm also, would like to ask, in regards to, for you, Chris, next week, the Civil Service Board is meeting up. And do you have any insight into...
He's supposed to address you, correct?
All right.
Chairman? Biggest chair, please.
Chris, we don't know this information. I, I wanted to know about the Civil Service Board that is meeting next week, if this commissioners here know why that meeting is and what they are going to be discussing in that meeting. Um, it was pretty vague what was posted, um, so I was just curious on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Anyone else who wishes to address the commission? Seeing no one else, you've got a couple announcements I would call your attention to concerning our meeting in the month of January. And I hope that each of you will have a very Merry Christmas and a prosperous new year, and may God bless you and stay in a journey.